I'd like to call to order the Avalon City Council meeting of Tuesday, August 19th. If we would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
And begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just like to make a comment during the invocation. Unfortunately, it appears that every council meeting, with the exception of maybe one or two, we acknowledge the passing of people in our community. And once again, we've lost two more people, Tom Sutherland and Charlie Camby. And let it be known that no one is of lesser or greater value than the next. Everyone has their own strengths, has their families, friends, careers, everything that have added to the community of Avalon. And I just want to say, without saying this every time, God bless everybody who's passed away and, um, thank you. You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Shiglin?
Here.
Mayor Pro Temlavel?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Are there any announcements or written communications?
I have none.
Okay. Department head report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Summer is coming to an end and the crew has been so busy. They completed all the in-town street markings, ADA car paintings, and red curb paintings. They are working on the Sobrero Fountain, which I think you've all seen the progress there. They're waiting on sort of pool paint. They continue the routine pressure washing of front street, alleyways, benches, and parks, and every morning sweeping, handpicking, and doing landscape. The crew continues to work on leaks as they pop up. About two weeks ago, we were working on the saltwater leak on Clarissa. You probably saw me with a stop sign. I'm working really hard. I lost my train of thought here. We were working on the saltwater leak on Clarissa. It was really interesting with this leak, like many others, but I was able to see firsthand what the crew is talking about when they repair live. When the water just keeps rushing, they call it a live repair. And a lot of our saltwater isolation valves are seized, so they don't quite close all the way. So they keep, the water, saltwater keeps rushing. And so someone's in the hole, and the water's still rushing. That's why you always see the vector truck there with them. That water keeps getting sucked out. So when they replace that valve, they're doing it live because the water keeps hitting their face. Keeps coming out. So you don't really understand that until you see it, or experience, or do it. So that was really, I was really fortunate to see the repair from the start to the end. And it's not a small feat. In the last couple of weeks, we've coordinated a deep clean of City Hall, and we will also be termite tenting next week. Public Works is also working on several projects. The site is prepped for the JMF scoreboard to be installed. We're just waiting on final approvals for engineering. We're prepping the site for two new utility poles out at Three Palms for upgraded, for an upgraded communications for wastewater treatment system. And on the admin side, we're installing a new computerized fleet management system at the mechanic shop, and still working on our climate change plan for the wastewater treatment and PDS permit requirement. That's it. Have any questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. Michael Allegria, Fire Chief. In July, I didn't give the numbers, last meeting, 142 total medical and fire calls. And the noise on Sunday night, we've looked at some video, and it more than likely was like a little cherry bomb or something. It wasn't a big firework, but we have some video from City Hall and some neighbors, and the people, they already left the island that next morning. But it was definitely loud. Something we're working on is a wellness app for the city. So through Lexipool, this company we have, there's this app, Cortico. It's a wellness thing, so it'll be available to everyone in the city and their spouse, whoever. And it's an app. It'll be an app. So if you want to talk to somebody that you don't want to face-to-face, you get on the app, push a button, there's someone to talk to. It's interactive. There's quizzes. There's all kinds of great material I'll send you guys. We're hoping to go live with it September 1st. And it will, we will have a fire app for firefighters, and then one for the city. And it's, it's like 66 different things on there to help you be healthy, be a healthy person. So once that comes up, I'll show you, share that.
Evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Since our last meeting, we had 347 log entries by the deputies. 94 of those were calls for service from the community. We did 10 traffic stops, four pedestrian stops that resulted in five citations being written. There were five arrests that were made. One was for domestic violence, one was for possession of narcotics, and three were for drunken public. I'd just like to thank Cali and Beverage Company and Vons. Cali and Beverage Company provided drinks for a national night out, and Vons provided hot dogs for everybody. It was a nice event, and I'd like to thank the city, actually, for letting us do it here instead of usually on Front Street. So hopefully, it continues on for the next several years.
Questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. So Jackie was kind of mentioning about summer, you know, moving right along, so that was actually my speech. We're over the halfway point for August, and knock on wood, we've got through the harbor with minimal, you know, major issues out in the harbor, so that's good, now that I've just jinxed myself. But one of the things we've been working on in the harbor is potential noise complaints before they become actual noise complaints. So I told, you know, patrol officers that like, make sure you get on these before they actually, we actually get a call. So we've been trying to do that with a couple this weekend that were a little problematic, but we took care of them. It was, anyway, it is August. This time of year, we also start to get a lot of events in the harbor. This weekend, we have three fishing tournaments. Yeah, two for the tuna club, and one for Pelagic. So they all have charitable components to them. So we'll probably see a lot of boats coming to weigh fish at the fish market and things like that. We'll see wherever the fish end up, so. We also, you know, we're less than two weeks away from Labor Day, so that's right around the corner. The outrigger race is after that. So it's a busy time, even into September, for events in the harbor. I will mention this just to reassure you. We are still working on the clock issue. We are trying to get the mechanical and electronic components for that. However, what we're up against now is some fairly long lead times. So we're trying to find somewhere that we can get these components where the lead times aren't, you know, 12 to 15 weeks. So that's where we're on that. We're still working on it. It's still work in progress. We're going to get the clock back up as soon as possible. Looking at the first two weeks of August in terms of stats, we had 1,449 boats arrive since the last time we talked, for a total of 5,620 mooring, which sounds pretty good. We're a little bit less than last year's August, that same time period, but not statistically significant. It's kind of the same way July played out. We were slower at the beginning, and then we made up for it at the end. So we'll hope that that's the way it goes here for August. In terms of other stats, this is for the month, actually, I date it back, this is for the last two weeks. We had four accident reports, six Baywatch assists, three citations, three emergency medicals, 22 enforcement calls, and 56 public assists.
I thank you. I was, I was one of the people that called on a noise complaint in the harbor, and Mike answered the phone, and they took care of it.
We like those. I mean, we don't like getting them, but we like putting them.
Right. That was very nice of them. They was right on it, so thank you.
That's it? Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Mayor, Council, Community Service. Reminder, the backpack giveaway for all kids, TK through 8th grade, will be this Monday on the 25th of August, starting at 1:00 p.m. for games and an ice cream social. With the backpacks and all the supplies given out at 2:00 p.m., we will be giving necessary school supplies to the teachers at Avalon High School and middle Avalon schools total this Friday. We're able to do this due to the generous donation from the yacht club. This is our last week of summer activities, so make sure you come out and join it with us. Tuesday, Thursday, Beach Bingo. Wednesday, 7:00 a.m. fishing derby, with a fishing experience afterwards with the outdoor club ran by Ryan Cordero, who has arranged a fishing boat sponsored by Pelagic Fishing Apparel to take 25 local kids deep sea fishing as a way to end the fishing derby summer. So we're really appreciative of them. That night, we have our Last Movie on the Beach series with the movie from Ryan Reynolds, the movie IF. And then Friday, Friday, we'll send off our summer with the Last Funky Friday from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And then you can start your week feeling well and happy by doing yoga on the beach at 9:00 a.m. Sunday. On August 30th, we will be celebrating the 50th anniversary of Jaws. We will be showing a movie at South, we will be showing Jaws the Movie at South Beach starting at 8:00 p.m. Come early, because we will have games, activity, and trivia, and prizes for you to win to start the event. We did, we did try to figure out ways to do this where we can have people in the water, but it, yeah, just was, so I've had people ask me, so I just want you to know, liability-wise, it's not the safest thing to do. So we decided we'll just have it on land, and we'll have somebody biting people or something on the way.
September 6th and 7th, the Catalina Crossing.
The score outrigger U.S. Championships will be arriving to the island. There will be over 1,100 paddlers. They will be coming from Newport to Catalina on Saturday, and they will leave Sunday back to Newport. Come support Team Catalina's co-ed team as they cross over on Saturday, with first boats arriving from about 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., finish line at the jetty by the dive park. Is there any questions?
Oh, great.
I just wanted to say for the outriggers, if you're not following them on social media, I would recommend it. They usually end up broadcasting both sets of races all weekend long, but they also have out now the gear that you can purchase as part of the event, shirts, hats, bags. It's pretty amazing gear. It's very kind of '70s throwback style Catalina Crossing, so kind of, kind of cool if you want to grab some, so.
Yeah, you'll see, they'll have, they'll have it out on display and for sale also on Front Street.
And I think they only bring over a very small amount of extra. Everything is pre-ordered, they said this year, so you want to make sure to pre-order to pick it up for that weekend. They may run out of stuff quickly if they bring extra at all.
Thank you.
Our finance director is on vacation, from what I understand.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. A couple updates. This Friday, August 22nd, well, in the City Council chambers, we'll have vehicle hearings. And then on Thursday, August 21st, I will be attending the LA County Solid Waste Regional Task Force meeting, the Facility Subcommittee at 11:00 a.m., and the Task Force meeting at 1:00 p.m. in Alhambra at the headquarters for the County Public Works to present on the Pebbley Beach Site Life Optimization Project. Last week, CalRecycle was out here and completed an inspection on the Pebbley Beach landfill. There were some expected findings that I'm working with CRNR to address and rectify before County, the County of Los Angeles returns next month. Let's see. The Civic Center Housing Project continues on, and we're progressing through the design phase, meeting with US Offsite and our consulting team with the city. So that's really great. I met with our, the city's on-call housing consultant, EGS, to get their insights and get a proposal together on housing policies moving forward for the Civic Center Housing Project. Property management and some of those administrative things will no doubt be taken to City Council later on as that project progresses. In addition, we received $42,000 from CalRecycle to improve the hazardous waste facility site that council approved with the budget this year, so we had a meeting with CRNR and Public Works so we can develop a project improvement plan for that site. And that's, oh, and then also CalRecycle announced a grant program for CRV expansion, which is really exciting. So I'm working with CRNR, with Olens, and some of their stakeholders on the island to hopefully expand our CRV redemption program, whether that's purchasing more reverse vending machines, or creating bag drop-off areas. So I'll keep you all informed of where we progress with that, so.
Questions? Thank you. Pardon me for, I'm just going to go all the way.
Do that blind. Right. Which one do you need? We could have Bob do it. Mary, wait. The one blind there? Might be the other.
Don't have to close it all the way, but yeah, that's good. Thanks. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. City manager?
Nope. We have a city planner.
I snuck up on you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kelly Robuffo, Contract Planner. I just want to make the announcement that tomorrow night's Regular Planning Commission meeting has been canceled due for a lack of business. However, instead, we will be having a special meeting on September 3rd, Wednesday, at 5:00 p.m. here in the council chambers, to make up for that meeting. On that agenda currently, we have the first in a series of code updates related to the implementation of our housing element programs. The first ordinance that will be presented on that Wednesday are updates related to our Program Number 14, which is updates to our accessory dwelling unit regulations to be current with state law, and Program Number 15, which is implementing some streamlined housing review for projects in our low and moderate income housing zone to streamline affordable housing projects on those properties that were identified as our housing opportunity sites in the sixth cycle housing element. Whether we have our regular meeting in September yet, we're not sure. Depends on whether we have business, but I'll be sure to update you guys at the next meeting. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Just checking, we're having reports that Zoom is frozen, so I'm just trying to see if we're good. I think they can, I think they can hear us, but the video might be frozen, so we'll, we'll continue. So just wanted to touch on a couple items. We, I think we had mentioned to Council that we have a grant application into Division of Boating and Waterways for the South Beach Seawall Restoration and Sand Replenishment Project. We have a fully developed project that we submitted for that, and we're, we're very excited about that, but that is a 50% matching grant. And I just wanted to say, today we had meetings, Dave Hart brought to the city, that RPUSD also has some funds that meet that same project. So we met today about filing another application for those funds. They're actually, we have a chance to hear sooner. There's no matching component to it. We can present the same project and even add a little bit on that Dave wants to do. So this is kind of, I just bring this to Council's attention because this idea and proliferation of the grants that we're applying for on a, on a repeated basis, we're on this cycle, and we're in a good spot. You know, credit to Dave Hart for bringing it, Kevin Schmidt for getting involved, and then Aliana Gonzalez, who runs our grant program. All got on it, got on it quickly. It'll be filed in September because we have a fully developed plan, which is something, again, credit to Bob Greenlaw for pushing these ideas of have these plans ready, have them on the shelf. So when these grant applications pop up, we're in a position to go and say, yep, we have a shovel-ready project, we're fully developed, we're ready to go. Similar to what we're doing with the housing project here, you know, these things are starting to come to fruition. So, you know, when we spend money like on, you know, US Offsite to have these fully developed plans, which, you know, the Jocelyn mentioned, we plan on bringing that to Council in the fall here, and present you with a fully developed, cost-priced-out plan, so we're in a position to say, yes, we can do that, or no, just, we need more funding for that. It puts us in a position to make educated decisions on these items, and, and if it doesn't work now, we have it ready to go when it does work. So it's working, you know, to have this, and we start seeing these funds come in. It's, it's great. And at some point here, we'll present Council with a, a value of the building and construction we were able to do and what it actually costs the city with taxpayer dollars versus grant funding. You know, we're, we're able to get a significant amount of work done for pennies on the dollar. So great work by everybody involved. And then five corners, as you see, keeps each week, a little more gets done. Curbs on this side are done. They've turned the corner, tearing up sidewalks. Those will be poured soon, in the next few weeks. You'll see the full sidewalks, hopefully, on both sides of the street. That project's really coming along. They're staying at it. Thank you to Bob and George, all and that whole team. And then finally, Jackie had mentioned that we're going to have termite tenting of City Hall here Friday. So City Hall, the building will be closed Friday, August 29th. We will be relocating some staff to work out of the fire department, out of some terminal, computer terminals we'll have there. Code will be in the field, we'll have other people in the field. The rest of city staff will be given an option, either take that day off, that Friday off, or we'll have work outside of City Hall for them to do. But City Hall will be fully tented that Friday through the weekend. Monday is Labor Day, so we'll be closed, and then we'll be back open fully to the public by Tuesday morning. So this is something, you know, as we've seen the last couple of years, we've seen more impact on termites, so we better do it now or never, so.
Well, the good news is the people will actually, no City Hall is closed.
Right. Right. No, they will know. Well, yeah, we will hear about it.
Well, they will be able to see it, so that's good.
Right. Any questions?
No, thank you. Do we have a city attorney with us today?
Just back from Philly, dropping my daughter off from law school, so Mr. Campbell, they both have.
Well, welcome home. Congratulations.
We're both empty nesters, or almost empty nesters.
Okay. Oral Communications?
No.
No? Here we go again. See, Michael, I'm glad you're am I right? Councilmember reports?
I'll go first. I don't have much, but I just want to say, if you missed a concert on Saturday, you missed a really good concert. It was a lot of fun, good crowd, good vibes. It was really nice. So I just wanted to say, kudos, Jim. That was great.
Nothing for me this week. I have nothing either.
I attended Gateway City's COG. The Rivers and Mountains Conservancy has some potential revolving grant funds, so I finally got the packet for that. I'll forward that to the chief for review, as it can impact fire safety in the community. And I will be out of town this week. I'm heading to Savannah, Georgia in August for a conference for the Student Youth Travel Association. Yeah, exactly. And everyone's bringing their extra deodorant, just in case. But hoping to share the possibilities of doing musical performances and having student groups come to the island, so hopefully, we'll be sending some people to the stage to perform and dance and sing, and Karen's Kids It Up.
Karen's Kids It Up. I remember that, of course. I just wanted to say, I attended a Cowboy Fellowship on Sunday, Catalina Stables, or Ranch, whatever they're calling it. Anyway, they're going to be having something every Sunday at 8 o'clock, so if you want a different experience for fellowship, it was pretty awesome. And then I was fortunate enough to be invited to Father Dario Maranda's installation as pastor of St. Catherine of Alexandria with Archbishop Gomez, and that was quite a community event. It was quite lovely. Okay. Oral Communications. This is an opportunity for people in the public to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Don't fight you two.
It's always a race. I'll be brief. Just a reminder, and Annie sent me up nicely, Catalina Island Horseback Adventures is also hosting this Thursday, a free public concert. There will be barbecue and other food items supplied by the Smokehouse, and you do not need to RSVP, you just need to come and have a really nice time. And I don't know if you were able to alter your plans, but one or both of us are supposed to help them cut a ribbon to officially be open, but I know you had a...
We'll both be there, how's that?
Yeah, okay. And I don't know if you were planning to say anything about the cancer walk progressing?
I was going to do it next meeting, but you can touch on it right now.
Okay. So now for, I think, the third year, if I've kept track, we are working with Catalina Island Health, community member Yolise, Councilmember De La Rosa, and the Susan G. Komen Cancer Foundation to hold a breast exam mobile vehicle. We'll come over to the island for two days again, and then we will do a cancer walk and paddle, just like last year, maybe with an equestrian element this year. So working on that.
What were those dates?
Oh, it has been changing on us, and I think it is...
I'll come from here.
Yeah, it's, it's been a moving target, but it's, it's coming at us.
But it's coming, that's great.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Burchell, Avalon Library. Just to first, a little note, the Friends of Avalon Library are looking for book donations for the book table that they run. I don't feel comfortable giving out Judy's address publicly, but you can bring your donations to the library, and we'll take them if you don't know where Judy lives. We've got a lot of stuff, a little light at the library because there's so much else going on in the town, but you should all come on down to the lean, air-conditioned, we're a cooling center. It's going to be getting warm, so come on down and sit in our chairs and read a book. Coming up on the Saturday, the 23rd, we have our STEM Day sponsored by SCE. We're going to make mechanical toys. They've given us these bunches of kits that all fit together and make little gears and fun things. On Wednesday, the 20th, coming right up, I'm going to try screening a movie. We're going to try and screen Death on the Nile, which is free because it's with your Canopy membership. That's why we've chosen that one. It's a lot of stars in it. It'll be fun. Loteria going to be on August 28th, that's Thursday. Our usual storytimes, now that Art in the Park is over, we still will be doing our storytime every Saturday at 11:00. Please bring your families over, and we do a great storytime. Creation Station Arts and Crafts every Tuesday and Friday at 4:00. Chuck Liddell doing his history talk. A week from tomorrow, I think there's a mistake in the paper, it says it's tomorrow, but it's actually a week from tomorrow. We've got Chuck Liddell and Sandy Putnam, and they're going to be arguing about the Bannings, which is going to be really kind of cool to see. Just very quickly, coming up in September, at the end of September, we're going to have our Special Art Day with the Barnesdale Park Friends of the Junior Art Center. That's kind of an awesome, exciting thing. On September 20th, we're going to be doing the Read a Book Ice Cream Party. I'll get you to read. I'll get you to read if I have to bribe you with ice cream. And our usual, yeah, actually, our Canopy Movie Night that month is going to be Monty Python and the Holy Grail, because I can screen that without a license.
Oh, my God, that's hilarious.
Figure. So we'll have popcorn. Thank you, Friends, for that. And come donate some books for the, the art festival coming up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Nobody else? We're going to the consent calendar.
Annie, did you want to do this first?
Well, we can do that first.
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, everyone, we have a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Avalon honoring September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, whereas the Childhood Cancer Foundation of Southern California reports that each year in the U.S., an estimated 15,780 children between the ages of birth and 19 are diagnosed with cancer. According to the World, the World Health Organization, approximately 400,000 children and adolescents develop cancer annually. And whereas cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in children of the United States with 90... States with 95% of survivors experiencing significant side effects by the age of 45. And whereas nearly 30 years ago, Steven Feierstein, a member of the Philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, founded the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc., in association with Alliance Clubs International, with the goal of helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide essential psychosocial services to the children undergoing cancer treatment at several hospitals, including Children's Hospital Los Angeles, City of Hope, Maddle Children's Hospital UCLA, LA County USC Medical Center, Harpo UCLA Medical Center, Cedar Sinai Medical Center, and other hospitals nationwide. These services help to enhance the quality of life for both the children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsor various initiatives, including toy distributions, educational programs, sailing programs, pet-assisted therapy, the KCC Supercar Experience, and hospital celebrations honoring the determination and bravery of children fighting against childhood cancer. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the mayor and the city council of the City of Avalon are committed to raising awareness about the impact of childhood cancer, and hereby formally declare September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month.
Very much. Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, item number one, approval of the minutes from August 5, 2025, regular city council meeting. Item two, approval of disbursements for July 28, 2025 through August 8, 2025 totaling $932,705.56. And item three, adopt a resolution appointing Mayor Marshall as the voting delegate, and Mayor Pro Tem Lisa Lovell as an alternate voting delegate for the annual League of California Cities Conference in October 2025.
Okay, I'm-
I make a motion to approve items 1 through 3 on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Call for the vote. Item four?
Public hearing, item number four, is appeal of a residential vehicle parking, I'm sorry, permit transfer for Gabriel Saldana.
Like to open the public hearing? Jocelyn, would you? We're going to have Jocelyn come up first, Gabriel.
Just quickly, so on February 19, 2025, Gabriel Saldana applied for the transfer of a residential vehicle permit from his grandfather, Lilo Saldana, which was issued prior to April 18, 1989. And on June 6, 2025, the vehicle hearing officer considered the application and denied the transfer due to Avalon Municipal Code Section 4-41707, which specifically addresses the transfer as to spouse or child of the deceased and does not address grandchildren transfers. And then on June 23, 2025, Gabriel Saldana submitted a request to appeal the decision, to deny, appeal the decision denying the residential vehicle permit transfer, which is attached to this agenda report.
Thank you. Public comment?
Hello, mayor and council, and thank you for your consideration to the appeal here. I'm hoping that they included the letter of appeal here, but just a few things that I had put in here that I'd like to at least voice to you myself here. Thank you for taking the time to do this. I appeared before the hearing officer and was denied a request to the transfer of this residential vehicle permit. At this time, there are no other eligible spouses or children of my grandfather who can inherit this vehicle permit. And according to the code, it is traditionally unconventional for a grandchild to inherit or be transferred a full-size vehicle permit from a grandparent. However, I do have several unique circumstances and positive affiliations that you may consider to see my plea as an exemption here. I am a new business owner as of 2024, and in that time have used the full-size vehicle extensively for interior work projects, especially ones in Two Harbors. In addition to serving other valuable businesses and government entities that serve the island, I do regular radio fleet maintenance for the harbor department down there in Two Harbors. There are also several pending interior-based projects and clientele that I would forfeit should I lose my personal vehicle and access to the interior. The full-size vehicle is also used for picking up large or unwieldy items from the Avalon Freight Services to work sites. I am also a new member of our local Catalina Search and Rescue Team, and having a full-size personal vehicle allows me to attend more meetings and trainings outside the city and potentially transport gear or personnel during an emergency call-out if there's not enough space with the team's limited fleet of vehicles, or if there's any late shows. I am a dedicated volunteer with the Catalina Amateur Repeater Association, who provides ham radio communications to the island, especially during the island's popular marathons and races in the interior. I've been volunteering with this group since 2016, and to this day am one of the very few active ham radio operators with a full-size vehicle, and who are regularly able to devote their time to not only serving for the entirety of the race and not having to leave early, but also to transport other radio operators that come to help us from the mainland, which sometimes we just don't have enough volunteership from here, that some of the people on the mainland that are a part of that club, which is about probably 95%, have to come and help us over here. I can transport them to various places for those races in the main, on the racecourse. There are many times when I was the only island-based volunteer, and were it not for my full-size vehicle, transporting other operators to their aid stations would have been a logistical nightmare for the radio club and also Spectrum Sports. I also assist in the radio club with transportation to the interior radio sites for maintenance. Even just this summer, we went up to the airport to replace some batteries, big, about four big 60-pound batteries to bring them up to the airport and then bring the old ones back into town for disposal. I might also add that the vehicle currently associated with that permit is one of the few that still adhere to the 200-inch size limit for the full-size vehicles. On a personal note, this vehicle was the last possession signed over to me by my grandfather. And ever since my college years, I have driven and cared for the vehicle in his old age, and he desired to sign over ownership to me. However, we lost the pink slip several years ago. In a stroke of luck, one of my uncles that was helping him with paperwork in the last couple of weeks was able to find that pink slip, and I contacted the DMV and was given guidance on how to proceed with a vehicle ownership transfer. While still mentally aware and in sound mind, he was glad to sign over the paperwork to grant me ownership of the car, and I had to rush to the hospital at the time to be able to have him sign that. So this is the last thing he signed over to me before he passed four days later, and I still have that picture and scan of that document, of course, from my memories. If the owner of this permit were still here with us, he would still be standing by my side at the podium to give his famous smile and seal of approval. No other immediate family members, spouse or children, are eligible to inherit that residential vehicle permit. My grandmother preceded him in death, two uncles, and my mom are not currently residents, and also one of my other uncles, who is on the island, currently already possesses a full-size permit. I'm also the, now the current registered owner of the vehicle by desire of my grandfather. Council did discuss the possibility of permanent changes to the Avalon Municipal Code back in March that would codify the request that I'm bringing to you today. Because of time restraints and the uncertainty of the future, I come before you today to expedite my fate with your decision here. And I am confident, though, that based off the positive dialogue that was discussed during that council meeting, that the council will adopt future resolutions to allow Avalon families in situations similar to mine to transfer their family's vehicle permits to extended generations. There will be difficulty, of course, with both ways of doing this, so I understand that with a positive decision, I'm able to retain the vehicle on island and continue its usefulness in my personal life and entrepreneurial adventures. And with this process of hearings, paperwork, and a lot of nervousness actually paying off. With a negative decision, I'll have to face difficulties with shipping the vehicle off-island, storing it safely, and most likely selling it to relieve myself of the burden of storing, as well as not being able to be physically around it on the mainland, and also forfeiting my abilities to be a participant in the community activities I mentioned before. I'm kindly asking for your consideration in approving my appeal to allow for the transfer of my grandfather's residential vehicle permit to myself, so that I may continue to operate the vehicle to support my business, support the various volunteer organizations I participate in, and to forego the burden of shipping the vehicle off-island. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Right, now we're okay. Is there any other comment?
Thank you.
I will close the public hearing. Counsel?
In the long run, I think we do need to look at the ordinance in regards to this type of thing. But I would have no problem passing this on because his mom would not be able to use it, because she's not on the island. And I don't think the ordinance was, you know, it was written so long ago, I don't think all of this was taken into account. So I would have no problem approving.
I'm confused. Didn't we hear this before?
No, that was his golf cart. We had, we talked about his golf cart.
Oh, right, 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 right.
Turning from gas to electric, so.
Got it, got it, got it. Yeah, I won't have a problem with this either. I mean, he uses it for, you know, all kinds of really good volunteer opportunities. And, yeah, since there's nobody else in the family, I don't see a problem with it.
I don't have an issue with it. The only thing I wanted to ask was just if there was a sense of urgency for timing for this. If we are bringing back the code to change, is it permissible to allow for a temporary permit to take place until the code does change, so it can be an official change, or is that what would be the right steps in this instance for that?
This is Scott, if I could speak to that. I think the council is within its power to say that in so, Russell and I have discussed amending this ordinance, which would include a exception or allowance of passing it to grandchildren who live on the island and met all the other conditions, that it would be appropriate for the council to give a temporary blue permit for one year while we go through the ordinance change, given the hardship and the unique circumstances in this particular situation, if that's your thing. So grant the permit for a year, we'll bring an ordinance back then. If the ordinance doesn't contain that, it will, you can consider extending it after the ordinance is amended. But our legal research has indicated that we can amend the ordinance to add that specific category of grandchildren, which would not violate any established law or right of any other people on the waiting list. So in a nutshell, yes, you can do it on a temporary basis. You could also just say there's a hardship, you can do it on a permanent basis.
I just have a couple of other questions. So the full-size commercial list is quite lengthy?
We have a waitlist for commercial full-size right now.
Okay. And the other thing, is Gabriel currently on the list, and what number is he on the list today? Do we know? Do you know roughly? Try to go, I'm sorry. I should have found out before I got here, I apologize.
I am not currently on the list for the residential full-size. My mom was, however, which was okay while she was here. Now she's not here, and her name just recently came up. But, of course, as we discussed back in March, not only can you not transfer this to grandchildren, but you can't transfer a waitlist to someone else, as it currently stands. So there was kind of two missed opportunities there.
Right, okay.
But it's not a commercial-
No, no, but no, I asked that first, and then the question that he commented about his mother did come up off the list, but of course unable to secure that, so.
Right. And she had mentioned being on the list, or something about a list back in the 90s, which I thought was her putting me on the list back in the day, but it turns out it was her. So I said, well, what good does that do us? So, yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, thank you, Gabriel. I guess if we do look at redoing this ordinance, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of things to look at. I mean, so, so all of a sudden, I have a grandson that lives on the island, but he's only 12, or he's 16, you know, can I give it to him, or does he have to be an adult? I mean, there's going to be a lot to look into if we look at redoing this.
I think we were already talking about redoing anyway, so, but yeah, there's a lot of layers of it.
I feel more comfortable doing the temporary, just so we can streamline-
I think that makes sense.
So we don't start opening up any loopholes here.
We also, if we were to extend it for a year, we would also get a good opportunity to look at who else will be coming up, and saying, that's my, you know, that's my issue too, and that kind of thing. And that could help us in our decision one way or the other. So, okay, well, is there other comments, or do we just, somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to overturn the decision of the vehicle hearing officer with a one-year temporary permit to be revisited after the vehicle code is amended, to allow for the passing of the transfer of the residential vehicle permit, blue sticker, to the grandchild of Lilo Saldana.
I just have one other question or comment. And I don't know if it has anything to do with anything. Something like, but all of a sudden he sells that vehicle and goes out and gets a new one? And then he goes, well, now I got this new vehicle, and so, I mean, that's not an issue at all. If he wants to replace that vehicle within this year, he can replace the vehicle within the year. Okay.
I would think so.
Okay, just throwing it out there.
And then I have a question for Scott and/or city council. We have fees associated with temporary vehicle permits. Would this be applicable in this situation, or would fees be waived?
Well, how much are the fees? Would you guess?
For residential, it's either $35 or $36 a month. $35?
I think it should be paid personally.
Okay.
$35, if it's $30-
Well, then if you're going to do that, then I'm going to go for giving him the permit, the blue sticker off right out, yeah.
Really?
Yeah. That's what I want to do anyways, but still, I, you know, I like the idea of the temporary, listening to it, you know, and making the change.
And not making any fees.
But if we're going to charge him $35 a month to have a temporary, no.
Because it's not an extra vehicle above what's normally here. It's a vehicle that's here already and been here.
It's already here.
Okay.
It's already parked, optometrically.
That's why we discussed this. That makes sense to me. Okay, so we have a motion?
Yeah, and move with the wave of the fees.
Yeah. I'll second.
I moved to second it. Let's call for the vote. Excellent, thank you. Congratulations. All right. And thank you for all the civic responsibility you have to the community and the volunteer work. Appreciate it.
Absolutely, keep it up.
Yes, yes. Okay, item number five.
Item number five, under general business, is an application for an encroachment permit by owner Steve Jones for property located 238 Marilla Avenue.
Good afternoon. 238 Marilla Avenue Encroachment Permit, applicant Steve and Sarah Jones. The permit application date was submitted July 29, and this is for Marilla Public Right Of Way. The scope of the project is to remove and replace stairs within the public right of way to access two rental units. They already have replaced stairs going into the private, in the private area of, to access the rental units. So they're waiting to replace the existing stairs within the public right of way. They also looking to construct two off-street golf cart parking spaces, install a waste and recycling container enclosure, and all the, as I mentioned, would be part of, improvements would be in the right of way. Here's a site plan. It's a rough draft here. You could see the two parking spaces, the enclosure. Our findings is that this is desirable and necessary, as it improves pedestrian access and safety, provides much-needed parking in a hilly neighborhood, organizes the trash and recycling containers. You can see how they're just sort of in the sidewalk right now. There's no adverse impact, does not interfere with the Jason properties, utilities, or public infrastructure. There's no public safety concern, and meets the grading and drainage and clearance standards, and maintains sightline, avoids narrowing of the road, and provides a pedestrian path. The applicant will maintain improvements and record maintenance easement with conditions. The permit conditions are for five years, and city manager designated establishes insurance, bond requirement, and maintenance standards. If there's no action on this, we will, the property owner would not proceed with improvements, and a missed opportunity for safety access in neighborhood- opportunity for safety access and neighborhood improvement. So the action today would be to approve the encroachment permit, authorize city manager to finalize terms, and if there's any questions, we also have the property owner here.
I'm answer questions. Okay.
Property owner would like us to say something?
Yeah, I just, good evening, mayor, council members, city staff, Sarah Jones, 238 Marilla. I'd just like to briefly reinforce what Jackie shared regarding the request for the encroachment permit. We feel that it's essential to allow us to continue making thoughtful improvements to the property. As Jackie mentioned, we replaced what was a structurally compromised, unsafe external staircase. Our goal is to extend that up to street level with a landing that will provide safe, convenient access to both of the duplex units. Again, we'd like to optimize the adjacent space to accommodate two off-street golf cart parking spaces and an area for trash recycle and green waste bins. We believe the scope of this project isn't just reasonable, but beneficial. Three reasons: to ensure code-compliant access for the year-round tenants that live there, clear up curbside parking congestion on Marilla, which benefits neighbors as well, and then just provide a more organized, aesthetically pleasing frontage area, enhancing the appearance and benefiting by extension the city. Any questions or points, any clarification?
No, go ahead, counsel.
I'll make a motion to approve an encroachment permit at 238 Marilla Avenue for the construction of private improvements, including new stairs, two off-street golf cart parking spaces, and a waste recycle can enclosure. To authorize city manager or his designee to approve, to finalize, and execute the encroachment permit, associate recordable maintenance covenant easement, and to negotiate with the property owners the amounts of the required bond deniability insurance. And if you can make this a nice, big improvement.
Oh, I know, yeah, exactly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved in second and call for the vote.
All eyes?
Sarah, thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, supplemental fee agreement for Pebble Beach Landfill Site Life Optimization Project. Looking for approval for this with the, for the county of Los Angeles. Joslyn?
Thank you. So as you are well aware, we've submitted the CUP and CDP an initial study mitigated negative deck to the county of Los Angeles. They have determined that this is a quote-unquote "major" project for the county of Los Angeles, and so they are, they've created a trust fund account for projects like this in Los Angeles County to ensure fee collection and everybody's kind of on the same page and there's transparency on the, on the project. So right now, they're estimating project fees to review the application to handle the entire land use process and zoning entitlements to be roughly $60,000. I'm asking for a 20% contingency, just in case the county goes over a little bit, we've got some room to play with. So attached to the agenda report is a supplemental fee agreement from the county of Los Angeles. It's been reviewed by our city attorney's office. So yeah, I'm here if you have any questions.
I always think around that. Shouldn't they be doing their job anyway, so why do we have to pay them extra money when the staff is already on board? But I guess it's something we have to do.
Get paid like we get paid.
Yes, exactly. Counsel, what's your pleasure, or questions?
Does anybody have questions? I'll move a motion if there are any.
No questions.
I'll move to approve the attached supplemental fee agreement with the county of Los Angeles for the Pebble Beach Landfill Site Life Optimization Project. I need one of those. And then to authorize the city manager or designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and authorize the city manager or designee to reimburse the county of Los Angeles up to $72,000.
I'll second.
Moved in second and call for the vote.
All eyes?
Item number seven?
Last item tonight is item number seven, resolution adopting the memorandum of understanding between the City of Avalon and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2295, for the contract period July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. And counsel, just note, I'm not going to address every item that we changed in here because many of them were duplicates of the same thing that we did for the last three MOUs that we brought you, but just clarify a couple things specific to fire. We did increase their uniform allowance by $500. That has not been increased in the last several MOUs. Prices of their equipment, their clothing, their gear goes up significantly. Also increased their mobile device stipend to $50 per pay period. Fire department uses their cell phones with a, with an app that's a little different, or significantly different than other employees that get the cell phone stipend. This is basically their communication device in their department, so we felt that that was warranted. A big item was clarifying the overtime language to make it 106 hours over a 14-day pay period and eliminated vacation time from hours worked for the purposes of calculating overtime. So this is a significant concession for, from the city's standpoint in order to be able to verify or control overtime to a certain degree, that vacation time, if an individual's on vacation time, that will not count as hours worked for overtime calculations, where in prior contracts, that was considered hours worked. So that definitely helps us control the budget for the fire department. Also decrease the vacation time cap from 960 hours to 720, similar to what we did with, with other departments. Same time, or this, the same thing, we reduce the sick time cash out at retirement from 720 hours to 360 hours. Again, it puts us in a better, much better position to control the fire department's budget and to plan for these items. In addition, we had the same healthcare plan offerings that were previously offered to the, to the other departments or the other groups, because we do have parity in that regard, and also the healthcare opt-out and the re-opener language on healthcare. So if there's any questions regarding the MOU? And we're very happy, you know, we appreciate all the work for the fire department, and we had a number of meetings, because we had a few, as you can see from some of this language, some significant changes in that, which will benefit both them and, and the city. So thanks to their negotiating team.
Counsel?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution adopting a memorandum of understanding and salary schedule between the City of Avalon and the International Association of Firefighters, Local 2295, for the contract period July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028.
Second? Moved in second and call for the vote.
All eyes?
Okay, now we have a closed session item?
We have a closed session item, conference of legal counsel anticipated litigation regarding exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraph two subdivision D, section 54956.9.
We'll be back in a little while.